I'd like to call to order the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, November 3rd, 2022 to order. If we can all please stand for the Fledgling Legions.
The Fledgling Legions of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Soule, will you please call the roll?
President Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Galagos.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Also present, Village Clerk Soule.
Thank you. The President's Report tonight, I would like to welcome, and I'm honored to welcome Congressman Chewie Garcia to Riverside. Thank you Congressman for taking the time to come. He will be providing the village with a brief legislative update and will also be presenting a flag to Riverside resident Ann Mega for the distinguished service of her husband Dan. Congressman Garcia.
Good evening, President Ballerine and of course the trustees and all of your team. Thank you so much for the invitation to be in Riverside. I want to give you a quick update on what I've been doing in Congress as I approach my fourth year as a member of that body. Over the course of the 117th Congress, we've passed several historic legislative packages, including the CARES Act, the American Rescue Plan, and CHIPS and SCIENCE Act, and more. So let me give specifics on two of those packages which will deliver benefits to municipalities like Riverside for decades to come. First, there's the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which is the largest federal investment in infrastructure since the New Deal. This bill invests $550 billion of new funds in transportation, broadband, utilities, including $110 billion in roads, bridges, and other federal infrastructure projects, $66 billion in freight and passenger rail, $65 billion in expanding broadband, and $55 billion for improving water systems and replacing lead pipes. Specifically, the bill also invests $11 billion in Illinois infrastructure. For Riverside, the infrastructure bill can assist with reconstruction of the Displanes River flood wall, help invest in stormwater infrastructure and other flood mitigation practices, ensure all homes are connected to clean water supply, and expand and improve regional transit systems like PACE. Second, I'd like to focus on the Inflation Reduction Act, which passed in August. This landmark package aims to curb inflation by reducing the deficit, lowering prescription drug prices, and promoting clean energy. It's our largest investment ever in climate resiliency, the largest investment in energy security and climate resilience while lowering energy costs and price. Specifically, the bill creates up to nine million new jobs, roughly a million jobs each year, over the decade in growing fields like clean energy, clean manufacturing, and green transportation while reducing our reliance on other countries for these essential things. It accelerates the rapid adoption of green appliances and vehicles through tax credits and rebates, and finally, it allows Medicare to negotiate directly for price of prescription drugs, meaning lower drug prices overall. It caps monthly insulin costs at $35 for those with Medicare coverage, and of course, it also caps out-of-pocket costs at $2,000 again for Medicare recipients. And of course, there's much more. And those packages are just part of the action. I've also been fighting on many other issues on my committees and beyond. With that, I'd like to transition to the most important part of my visit here tonight. I want to start by thanking President Ballerine for sharing the Mega family story with me. Mr. Daniel R. Mega, a veteran and hero, passed away in January. Daniel Mega was born in 1949 and grew up in the Brighton Park neighborhood in Chicago. He served his country bravely in the Army's 9th Infantry Division and exited the service as a very decorated soldier, earning nine medals in total for his service: two Purple Hearts, two Bronze Stars for valor, a Vietnam Gallantry Cross, an Air Medal for a single act of heroism, and Army Commendation Medal again for act of heroism. Sergeant Mega embodied and still embodies what it means to be strong and an integral part of a community, not only being called to service in the military, but being called to service in the community. He volunteered his time at community fundraisers and coached local sports clubs with his son. It is that memory in Daniel Mega's remembrance that I have the privilege to present this flag as a small token of not only my gratitude, but also the gratitude of the Board of Trustees and the residents of Riverside. I'd like to invite the Mega family to join me up here to receive these tokens in honor of Sergeant Mega.
Thank you Congressman Garcia. We really appreciate you taking your time, and I know the Mega family appreciates it. And I'd like to thank the members of our local legion for coming out tonight. We appreciate your support also. So, thank you all. And with that, I would like to offer a... So, thank you all for coming. I appreciate it. As we move on, I move on to a motion to appoint Paul McNearland to the Economic Development Commission. Paul is a new business owner in town. He's partner over at Gears TU and has filled out an application to be on EDC and wants to be involved. So with that, if I can have a second?
So moved.
There are a motion and a second. Motion by Trustee Galagos, second. Second by Trustee Marshazga. Ethan, if you could please call the roll?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
He needs to swear.
He's here. We can swear in there.
Oh, you're right. You're the good-looking guy in the front row that's dressed up. We never really did this before. They usually never show up.
All right. Come on, just hold your right hand up. Feet after me. I, Paul McNearland.
I, Paul McNearland.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Economic Development Commissioner.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of Economic Development Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Paul, thank you very much for your service. And just so you know, there is not a dress code like that at the EDC meeting. Usually I don't wear a tie. I was forced to. Second is my honor to appoint Larry Forsberg, who has been a longtime EDC member, to chairperson of the EDC. The village is very fortunate to have Larry Forsberg agreeing to be the next Chair of Economic Development. Larry brings extensive knowledge to the commission. He has worked for the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau for over 16 years. During that time, he has also served as chairman and as member of the Board of Directors for DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau. So I would like to ask for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Galagos, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Marshazga. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Motion carries. And unless Larry's hiding somewhere, we will move on to the manager's report.
Thank you. I just have a quick couple of items for this evening. First, Parks and Rec Department will be hosting a free pickleball event this Saturday, November 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. It will be at the Indian Gardens Court. The department will have equipment available along with tips from different experienced players in addition to free playtime so that residents or those that are interested may play matches with other members. Also, early bird registration for basketball program ends tomorrow. Sign up by noon tomorrow to receive the $10 discount. Residents and/or non-residents, as long as they've registered with us before, can do so online at their convenience. And if they would like to coach, they can certainly reach out to the Parks and Recreation Department. And finally, from my very Parks and Rec eccentric report, Westrol will begin offering children's yoga at 43 East Quincy this spring. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Do we have any resident comments on non-agenda items? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Ethan, if you please?
Approve voucher list of bills, November 3rd, 2022. Review and file Police and Fire September monthly reports. Approve public hearing minutes for proposed 2022 tax levy. Approve public hearing minutes for proposed 2023 budget. Approve Village Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes, October 20th, 2022. Review and file Parks and Recreation Board regular meeting minutes, August 22nd, 2022. Review and file Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting minutes, September 28th, 2022. And a resolution authorizing the village manager to waive competitive bidding and enter into an agreement with Arthur P. O'Hara and issue a purchase order for the not-to-exceed amount of $80,478 for Village Hall office renovations.
Thank you, Ethan. Do any trustees would like to have any of these items removed? Hearing none. If I can ask for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Galagos, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Marshazga.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to Department Boards and Commission reports. Tonight, we have with us Lisa Lambros, the Chair of our LAC Commission. Lisa Lambros.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the work plan for 2023. I guess before I start on 2023, I did want to reach out and thank the support that we've had for 2022 programs. We've had a great support. We had a great liaison from the trustee with, trustee Evans, and then we were awarded, trustee Marshazga, and she's been really a joy to have and has helped our commission, I think, a great deal. And also Amy Downing, who's done a great job with e-flashes and getting our website back up to, I think, the century, and it looks fantastic and a lot easier to work with. So just a shout out to them. Our budget is really filled with a lot of things based on education and the environment. And we are, the first thing that was in your package is our trifold. We worked with Director Tab and our village forester Collins on putting together an educational piece that made sense. We have a lot of new residents that don't understand how to care for trees, how to mulch properly, what kind of permits they need for, in front of their home. So this is kind of a concise document for us. We're submitting it to you for your approval, for you to look at. It has not been printed, it has not been sent out, but it is something that the commission and Public Works has come together to try to make things a little clearer. The goal is to basically be able to print X amount of documents to those that are not on electronic forms of communication, and the rest would be put out in an eflash and then on our website. Number two, the native plant incentive program is based on removal of invasive species, such as buckthorn, honeysuckle, burdock, poison ivy, and really working on understory and perennial level. Forester Collins does so much here in the village with tree and larger trees. This is to balance that and to kind of put some other products into areas that as we take out invasives, we're planting natives. That work would be done, of course, with the Public Works and Village Forester in collaboration. The next item, the Pollinator Focus Program, is really education of residents on best practices. So that can be all sorts of things, from planting natives to less spraying for mosquitoes, other alternatives, and focusing in on monarchs that are endangered and what each of us as individuals can do with that. We are actually collaborating with RB Ecology Club on this. So we don't have all the format in place yet. We're just working with them initially, and then we'll come back to the village board with kind of what the progress will be for 2023. Next is the Park Project Awards. We've done an okay job of awarding a certificate to any of our volunteers that we've had that have worked with the LAC. But I always think we can do a better job, and some of that, you know, I think one of our greatest assets as a village is our volunteers, who I'm looking at a lot of them right now. And I think that most of the people that we're working with on volunteer programs are younger people, and I think that's a great initiative to kind of get them to understand that even the adults in the room appreciate them and what they do. So that would be something we would work with the village board of trustees as far as bringing those folks to, for us to be able to do a certificate in front of the village board. October, you had in your package that was for this, just this past year. Next year would be similar. It's education of residents, the children, about our parkway trees, and understanding that we have a tree inventory, that we understand our trees that are on our parkways, and understanding what attributes they have and what they can bring. And I think that's really important because of, if we educate the youth, when I'm long gone, there'll be still somebody caring about trees and bushes and native plants. So that's, and that's great. We've got some awards to do. We did a coordination with, of course, Public Works and the Village Forester on this, and also the library. So the library gave out our packs that had chalk in it, and we've gotten some very nice artwork that we'll be getting some fantastic pins and posters for the kids on trees in Riverside. The last one, our biggest budget item, is Swan Pond. And this has to do with our master landscape plan that we have put together over many years. It was to kind of align for us to understand our different areas, whether they're parks, triangles, native areas. And one part that changed was when the village board had decided not to mow the area, and we need to make an amendment to the master landscape plan to include that, so we're all in alignment. One of the things that we didn't know was, what do we have down in Swan Pond that's good, that's native, that we want, and what don't we have? So that when we make the amendment and bring it to the board, that we have data, that we have plant material data, that we understand. We spent $600 of our $1,000 budget from this year for these training, two training sessions, and for us to get this FQI back from the ILM. Also, another part of this is, even though the Public Works Department is doing and working with the ILM to actually get rid of, like, reed canary grass, at this point, we weren't doing anything to replace it with seeding of that area. Forester Collins did say that he does have now a bag of seed, I think, for next spring to put out, but this is part of, is that continuing? So we'll get a continual update every year as far as plant material, what needs to be looked at and gone after, and then a seeding program that would be part of that. So. And that would be engagement with Public Works and our Village Forester. And last, we just have marketing. We have some supporting programs. We put that in. We've done a lot of postcards on different, to the different local businesses when we've had a promotion. I will say this, I love the fact that we had time at the farmer's market that was able to get us some, I guess, in-person communication with our residents, which really helped, and I appreciate that we had that opportunity. And with that, you know, President Ballerine had asked, you know, on sustainability, you know, how does the LAC and how do these individual parts of our budget work for sustainability? Our goal is education and environmental, and that pretty much covers everything except the marketing support. I mean, that's what we do. And our goal is to really not only have our small group of seven out there, you know, working it, but roping in our residents and getting them involved in whatever level that is, and having them think about how important our trees are and how important the actually basic just biodiversity of Riverside is. That's it. Any questions?
Trustees, any questions for Chairperson Lambros?
I do.
Yeah.
So, this is a night, I like your budget, and I think you have some great plans. So some of the work that I know the LAC does, so the budget would be for work that's done in, it's not actually on the regular list for the village staff. These are things that village staff doesn't do.
Correct. Correct. And I will say this, you know, I didn't mention, I did a cursory, one of the things that, there's a, you know, there's a lot of free money out there, free as in grant money. So we have identified $1,000 to $10,000 worth of grant money. We've got two of them that the village grant writer is going to help us with. Yeah, and they're not up yet. And then the rest of them we're applying to this fall. They're small, you know, they're 500, they could be 1,000, they could be, but that might help us too, but we don't know what we'll get from that. But that, I think, is an important part of what we should be doing too, looking for opportunities.
Well, thank you for everything you do and your commission does. I don't think people, you know, we're, trustee Marshazga and I was on a phone call today with the C4 Collaborative, the Sustainability Collaborative, and just explaining to them what we have, you know, 1,100 acres and 50-some-odd triangles, and they were astonished that a lot of that is being maintained by volunteers. So, you know, I came out there one time when you were working on a triangle, and people pass these triangles and don't understand what work goes into them. They just see plants. That's all done by volunteers and your group and people that will help you. So we really, really appreciate what you brought to the table.
That's great. We love it. We love working with Public Works and the Forester, you know, it's a great collaboration. And we try our best to not impact their load at all, their labor load, as much as I would love to actually be able to go out and kill the weeds on the triangles. I'm not allowed to do that, so I do have our forester do that. But it's great support, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate for everything you do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Next is an update regarding the registry and inspection of rental properties within the Village of Riverside. Ms. Monroe?
All right. Well, thank you. Good evening, Village Board of Trustees. I did prepare a memo. It's item 8B in your packet. So I won't go into exact detail regarding the program. I think the brief memo prepared offers a good summary of some of the issues that we've encountered this year, the basic aspects of the program, and some of the challenges or lessons that we've learned from this program. So the basic premise of our rental registration program is that rental properties with three or more rented units are required to register on an annual basis. It's to ensure that we have appropriate and current contact information for the property owners and the property managers. It's to create a positive or working relationship with the landlords and the tenants within those buildings. And it's also to ensure that we have an opportunity to inspect 30% of each of those buildings on an annual basis. So if you have three units in that rental property, we would inspect one unit, and we would inspect the common areas, so hallways, utility areas, and the exterior of the property. And so we enacted this program, or the village board approved the ordinance of creating the program last fall, or I should say August. We put in place the registration process for properties with the initial deadline of late January. It took us time, frankly, to determine exactly which properties belong in the program. We sent mail to probably about 100 properties, of which approximately 60 are currently eligible for the program. So these range in size from three units to 60 units. And so identifying exactly who's, you know, registered, who has not registered, who we're trying to track down still, and apply various invoices to has taken time. It's a manual process, especially at first. I fielded a lot of phone calls from landlords and some tenants, but predominantly landlords about the program, the necessity of the program, and explaining what the expectations were for them. Staff had to create a checklist, so we use an inspection checklist. We base that work on other programs that have been in existence for a while and around the Chicago suburbs. So we had a model for this. And although it has worked pretty well, I would say, it's the first year of a big program, an important program, and so we are finding that there is significant work that still needs to happen in bringing the common areas into code compliance. There's some very old buildings in Riverside, and while a lot of our landlords do take pretty good care of their buildings, there are things that they haven't had inspected or needed to have inspected ever, really, before. We're introducing something completely new. And so each building, you know, we're finding that each of the buildings that are participating and have been inspected so far, we've done about a third of the units needed at this point in time. We've really only been doing inspections for about five months because of the staffing availability. So we got everything in order. We started inspections in May, and so this is a very new program still, but we're trying to get at them, and now we're increasing our staffing availability. And because the construction season's winding down, we have additional help that's available to do more inspections and kind of keep getting them in for this year. We're still hoping to address most of them by the end of the year, still in December, and then we'll finish out the last remaining ones that we didn't get to into those buildings, hopefully in January. So as I was saying, there are things that we're finding in the units and in the buildings. The most common issues are things like exterior masonry and tuck pointing. There's concerns there. Sometimes... Sometimes they even have pieces of the building fallen off. We've had some stairwell concerns where there's either uneven stair treads and the space between steps have been repaired improperly or against code. It's a trip hazard. We have, you know, ripped window screens, uncapped electrical boxes, so some electrical issues, some lighting, lots of missing smoke detectors and CO detectors that really are essential in fire prevention and just health and safety. Front panels of boilers missing. So it's not, you know, they, they range from very serious and, but also small amounts to more serious or complicated. There's been a couple of more structural building concerns in just a couple of the properties we've seen. Again, we haven't been to more than about 40 properties out of the, the 60, but we have seen a couple of things that are structurally needing permits and, and building structural review in order to repair them effectively and safely. So each building ranges from about five to 10 concerns on us, on a checklist with about 30, 35 items. We've had staff that are very good about being flexible with our landlords. They introduce the program, they talk with the tenants, they ask the tenants if there's anything of concern when they go through. People have generally been appreciative of pointing out a couple of things that they just didn't know weren't code compliant, you know, no surge protectors on an outlet or, so a missing handrail, you know, in a stairwell. Those kinds of things are being addressed as, as best we can and with as much sensitivity to, to the fact that this is a new program. So I'll, I'll answer any questions that you have about it, and if there's anything in the memo you want me to address, I'll, I'll do that. Or rolling along, but still have a little ways to go.
Any questions for trustees?
I do.
Seth.
What kind of reception are you getting from the landlord, the landlords and building owners when you give them the checklist?
Well, we created the checklist and we posted it online so that people have forewarning about exactly what we're looking at. Not everybody knows it's there or has paid attention, right? Some people still, to this day, say, I didn't know there was a program, and despite a couple of mailings going out. And so, you know, it's, it can be overwhelming. We designed it specifically with concern over what, what was not enough and what was too much. There are some programs that have four or five pages of things to look at, and we felt like that was, especially in this first go-around, just, just too much to have an ask of people. There were very, very simple programs where they had a dozen items and it just didn't quite cover enough information. So we're addressing the main pieces of, you know, what a building is looking for. Do they have the smoke detectors and CO detectors? Are the doors and windows and common areas safe and secured? Is electrical, plumbing, and the general interior safe? Are the washer and dryer connected to, and vented properly? Furnace, water heaters, and boilers, air conditionings, and then just a general thought. People do have the opportunity to, to request an appeal. So if we receive a request within, the code allows eight days to provide anything in writing. I've been flexible. It doesn't have to be a written stamped letter, but an email even to, to our office. I've gotten one or two of them. Generally, people are accepting of, of us pointing something out. And like I said, we've been pretty flexible in allowing them sufficient time to address it. So even a couple of months to say that you need to make sure you're coming back to us. We're at the reinspection phase now for a couple of the properties. And that, and a lot of people, you know, we have a couple of them have been approved and finalized. We have a handful that we've, you know, issued a certificate for. So we're getting there little by little.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I have a, I have.
Yeah.
Would, would, you've been in it now for five, five and a half months. Is there, is there anything you, you see that possibly we can tweak to make, make your life and, and the renter's life and landlord's life easier?
I think the only thing outside of just needing a little bit more time to assess, you know, the, the outcomes that we're seeing, the pricing for the program, I think the only thing that we may want to clarify is the amount of time that we require before we can go back and re-inspect. So whether it's the, right now, we're requiring 21 days notice for the initial inspection, and then landlords are supposed to give their tenants four, 10 days, I'm sorry, 10 days notice. They can even just hand them the letter that we provide as confirmation as their notice to make it very easy. But when we go back and re-inspect, it's not clear in, in the ordinance what the requirement is, whether we need to give 10 days notice, 21 days notice, or something else. And so while we've been going back later on, the scheduling, because of those tight constraints and the ordinance, we have to be careful about when we're, how, how close we're scheduling the next inspection, which isn't super flexible for either the landlord or us, but.
What can we do to stop that?
Just, just perhaps create a clarification in, in the code, so if it's within a certain period of time after the initial inspection that we can go back to the property, or if we just say the reinspection follows the same, you know, scheduling or guidelines, that would be fine. It, it's just not clear, so.
So what I, what I understand is it's the 21 days, and then if somebody says, I just put up my, 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 my smoke detector, can you come back tomorrow? You say, no, I can't come back.
Yeah, and, and that's what makes it challenging. We don't want to interfere with the tenant space, but also if we had the ability within a certain period of time on, on simple things like that, you know, to go back and take a look, then they can be done instead of waiting, you know, next number of days.
Yeah, that's something we can do. I think if, if clarity is needed, because as you said, these reinspections are under very different circumstances, maybe we can simply make clear that staff has the authority to set that.
Yeah.
As long as there's notice given to both the landlord and the tenant that respects their, their rights as possessors of property, because to dictate that in the code might create more problems than the vagueness you're facing now.
Okay.
I think, but we can, we can talk about it a little more.
Good.
Let's, 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 let's solve that problem.
Thank you.
And, and keep going, and then, you know, our goal was to include single-family and duplexes, but we wanted to get a full year under our belt to see how, how this is going and, and make sure we have the bandwidth to be able to do everything, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much for, for, for all the work you've done on this.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions for Ms. Monroe? Okay. We will move on to pending business. First thing is discussion regarding text amendments related to temporary membrane structures, temporary storage tents, and temporary event tents. And it is my sincere pleasure to introduce everyone to Plan Planner Siren, who is, this is her first presentation to the board. So, welcome.
Thank you all very much. I'll try to be brief. In, in August, the board directed staff to amend the zoning code to limit the amount of time that tents can be used for special events, so the code currently allows tents to be out for 30 consecutive days for a total of 45 days in a calendar year. Staff asked the Planning and Zoning Commission for their input, and they expressed support for creating separate standards for temporary storage tents and special event tents, to limit the amount of time that special events tents are up, and to the duration of the event with two days before and after for setup and takedown, and for limiting the location of the tents. Based on the board's direction and the commission's feedback, Attorney Mars and staff drafted the text amendments that are in your packet for review. The amendments distinguish temporary storage tents from temporary event tents, and they establish regulations for temporary event tents. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the amendments, or I can review them if you'd like further details.
I think your executive summary is pretty much exactly what we, what we talked about. So the, if I, if I just want to make sure that the, if an event tent would be done under the zoning administrator or the, the special, the, the, the event, whatever we call it, what do we?
The special event application process.
Application, so that would not have to go in front of PCC, but if someone wanted to put a storage tent for a construction job or something else in their backyard, that it, that would have to go in front of PCC, correct?
If there, if a variation is required, it would need to go for PCC, yes.
Okay. Any questions? I think that's pretty much what we, what we looked at.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Oh.
Yes, ma'am.
Wait, sorry. So, sorry, I'm putting my attorney hat on.
Please do.
The, the meeting minutes from August 19th stated that the ordinance regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to allow the placement of the tent in the street yard would be tabled to this meeting, and that was the consensus. Do we need to do anything legally as it relates to that particular item?
Is that the pending one?
That's the pending one.
The pending application, right?
Correct.
Yeah, if, if, so I, Michael didn't say that that was on this agenda when, when we spoke, and I, and I, it wasn't clear from the agenda, but I would say that my understanding is depending on what happens here, that may obviate the need to, to, to deal with that. So I would say we should enter and continue that request to a date certain at this point. So just pick one. I mean, that's after, we're gonna, this is being set now for a public hearing, right? Now it's going forward.
Correct.
So it has to go through that process, then it needs to come back to the board and be adopted, and so what I would say is to continue it maybe to the first meeting in January or something.
How about the first meeting in February, just to make sure there's enough time for everything?
And that's perfectly fine, as long as to a date certain, we're covered, and they don't have to, we don't have to republish that or whatever, and they may not need it at all depending on what happens here. So that's what I would recommend.
February 2nd?
Groundhog Day.
Okay. Groundhog Day.
Do we need a motion on the second?
Yes.
Okay.
The motion would be to continue the variation application that's pending to February 2nd. We don't need to include Groundhog Day.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to what council just said. We'll move it to February 2nd for date certain.
Trustee by, or motion by trustee Galagos, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Marshoska. Any further questions? Hearing none. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshoska.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second thing on our pending business is our return to the TOD. Last time we finished at around page 13 or 146, depending on, I don't know what it depends on, but I have both page numbers. Ms. Monroe, if you could.
Yeah.
Carry on and, and maybe possibly go through some of the things that we asked, just so we're, we're all clear on some of the things we were, were, were reviewing or thinking about.
Certainly. So, as a reminder, the transit-oriented development code updates was a effort by the steering, ad hoc steering committee with a consultant team and several reviews by the Planning and Zoning Commission to incorporate changes to predominantly commercial districts, but also making changes throughout the village's zoning code ordinance related to pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly type of access and accessibility, mixed-use type of development, other, other sustainability changes potentially, and various changes to uses, to bulk standards and, and height and setbacks in, predominantly in the, the commercial districts, so B1 and, and B2 zoning districts. And we had just wrapped discussions on the use tables in the B1C ordinance, or, I'm sorry, the B1C zoning district is currently predominantly all located along Harlem Avenue and a section of transitional commercial along Burlington, along Burlington. The B2 zoning district is predominantly what we refer to as our central business district, so downtown area. We have public use zones, a mixed-use zone, and a commercial in that area. So this evening, we are finishing talking about the proposed kind of chart that we had created for purposes of review that shows the existing code language and the proposed code language with a rationale for that change, and had left off, I believe, at the tables starting to talk about bulk requirements in the, the B1 commercial district. And then the other thing that we've provided to you new in the packet this week I will make mention of is a memo and supplement from Planner Siren, which is an examination of comparable commercial districts, central commercial districts in other communities that can give a good picture of how our, our existing code and our proposed code changes compare to some of the other surrounding communities. So if you would like additional feedback on, on that item, once we're done having a, a discussion about the table and changes, she'll be available to do that. So, how would you like me to walk through this? You want to do as we had done before and, and just stop for comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, and, and I'll preface this as well by noting the additional conversation about the, the proposed TOD zoning district. So the, the map change that we would be proposing, we'll talk about it at the, at the following meeting, so mid-November, the 17th, we'll bring forward the map amendment for that area along Harlem Avenue. We'll talk about the, the kinds of properties. I think we were looking for comparable developments and other types of features that we went, want to consider, along with any proposed code changes in that area. And then there was discussion of the rail scape kind of overlay district, and we'll have more information for you about that as well. So just kind of prefacing this as follow-through, our charts with some discussion. We'll make any notes and feedback and then bring those back to you at the next meeting as well. Okay? Good. Okay. So the easiest way to talk about the changes proposed for the, the B1 commercial districts was to break the, the chart and, and sort of just repeat each of them in triple kit, unfortunately. So we'll start with the minimum lot area. Currently, there's not a requirement for non-residential in the B1C commercial, so the main kind of strip of, of commercial on Harlem. The residential is currently 1,800 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit, and the proposed is to remove that 1,800 square feet of, of area per dwelling unit. The purpose of the TOD zoning is to increase the density or opportunity for density, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, when they went through this exercise, had recommended the removal of this per dwelling unit minimum for each of the districts, or the sub-districts, because other zoning requirements would meet kind of the intent of, of regulation. There's no change proposed to the minimum lot width or the minimum facade height, so the current lot width is none, and the minimum facade height would be 18 feet. The next change is for a minimum building height, which is described as 24 feet, is measured in accordance with the definition of building height. We've had some discussions at past board meetings about whether the 24 feet should be, continue to be kept in, in this area, and what you want that zoning district to look like, right, at a commercial level. This was a steering committee's and staff recommendation for streetscape maintenance, but, but to, to be determined by the Village Board as to whether you'd like to keep that. The maximum building height is currently maximum of 35. The maximum building height is currently a maximum of 35 feet, but no more than three stories, or 48 feet, but no more than, I'm sorry, there's a period missing there, 48 feet, but no more than four stories is permitted as a special use. And the proposed language says that the maximum building height would be 48 feet, but no more than four stories, or 60 feet, but no more than five stories permitted as a planned development. So they removed the special use, just noting that it didn't necessarily matter what type of use that, that building was, it, it more likely would come across with a request for greater height as a planned unit development. And, yeah. The maximum front yard is currently a maximum of five feet, and the same maximum of five feet would apply. We added a section that says C subsection 1062G, which is a reference to a new outdoor dining setback allowance. And we explained that in the, the last meeting as to the parameters for that outdoor dining. There's no changes proposed for minimum corner side yards. There is a change for minimum interior side yard, which currently is a building for up to two stories in height, there is not any interior side yard required. There's also for buildings up to two stories in height, 25 feet. So the change would be moving from a specific two stories, instead changing that to 24 feet in height, or for buildings above 24 feet in height, there would be an interior side yard setback of 25 feet. The steering committee had agreed that a setting a uniform height in the feet would be easier than setting it by stories. Let's see. Minimum rear yard, minimum rear side yards, for buildings up to two stories in height, there's none required currently, and for buildings up to two stories in height, above, I believe it's supposed to say above two stories in height would be 25 feet. Apologies. The proposed for a minimum rear yard side yard is for buildings up to 24 feet in height, there's not anything required. It's, it's the same principle as the last for the interior side yards, that the 24 feet would be easier to measure and enforce than by story. The requirement to have a driveway separation isn't applicable in the sub-district. There are new notes, so the structures in the B1 business district, so all three of the, the sub-districts, the two existing and one proposed, that fall short of or exceed the height minimum or maximum limitations respectively of this chapter and of this table, as of the date of adoption hereof, shall be deemed to be conforming in terms of height. And this is when we talked in a past meeting, about any additions or enlargements to those structures shall be in conformance with the requirements of this chapter. So if they make changes afterward, they'll have to meet all the guidelines of this chapter. There's no current footnote that exists related to that. We'll only repeat B1TC, which is our transitional commercial, changes that are different than what I just walked through. So this table also removes that 1,800 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. We also incorporate a minimum building height, and this section of 24 feet is the minimum. There is no current requirement for this in the B1TC. There's a minute, maximum building height, which adds the footnote about non-conforming buildings and what happens to them after the code adoption. The proposed is, moves to 48 feet as a maximum from 35, but no more than four stories, instead of more than three stories. And it would allow a height of up to 50 feet with the pitch of a, you know, a peak of a pitched roof. The maximum front yard also incorporates this subsection about outdoor dining. There are no changes to minimum corner side yards or interior side yards, they exist as they are. There's no change to minimum rear side yards in this district. And they do have, the required driveway separation does apply in the B1TC sub-district, and this is just a clarification that the separation should have, maintain a minimum 20-foot separation between curb cuts. Currently, it just says maintain a 20-foot, foot separation. So this is saying a minimum rather than a set 20 feet. And then the note is also incorporated the same to, to show that they would be in conformance. The B1 TOD is nearly all the same as the, the B1C proposed. Currently, this, this sub-district doesn't exist, and so we're proposing a minimum lot area where there, there is no requirement for a minimum lot area, because there's a, there's no requirement that there would be a per dwelling unit square footage. There's no minimum lot width in the B1 TOD, a facade height minimum of 18 feet. These all match the B1C sub-district language. The minimum building height, again, is 24 feet, so the explanation of, of feet versus set number of stories. Maximum building height is 60 feet proposed, but no more than five stories. So this goes from the B1C district where the maximum building height is four stories. It would allow, in the B1 TOD area, no more than five stories at a height of 60 feet, whichever is less. As a reminder, too, the TOD sub-district is, the north end of this district is at Addison, and the south border ends at Lawton along Harlem. There's about 14 to 15 properties that fall in the, in the district. Maximum front yard would be a maximum of five feet. It also incorporates the outdoor dining aspects, and matches B1C sub-district language, as do all the other side yards. So corner side yard, interior side yard, and a rear side yard all match the B1C sub-district proposed language. Required driveway separation is that same language as the TC district, they would maintain a minimum 20-foot separation between curb cuts. It all, it doesn't apply to shared driveways, and there is a graphic for B that, that we've incorporated into the code changes to show what this looks like. The same note is applied here for structures that exist already in the, in the sub-district are, to conform with the code if they make any additions or changes. And in this, the only difference here is in those side yards up above, where there's a minimum interior side yard, a minimum rear side yard, there's a footnote that says, where a lot line abuts a railroad right-of-way, no buffer yard is required. So it just kind of explains the expectations for, for setbacks. Okay, any questions on the sub-districts and the bulk?
Any questions? I think we, we all had, I mean, last time we talked about the 24 feet.
Yes.
That's one thing that we're, we're.
Yes.
We're all concerned about. Go ahead, keep moving.
Okay, great. These, these other ones, I think we'll move a little faster. All right. 10-7-3 accessory structures and uses. We're talking about encroachments and encroachment exceptions. So the current code really has very little detail about what accessory structures can encroach into side and rear setbacks. Based on staff recommendations to the steering committee, there have been things that are incorporated into this, either because they were historic structures or questioned in the past, and so we needed a little bit of guidance in case this comes up again. So the exceptions include following, provided they comply with permitted encroachment standards and, and are otherwise permitted. So there's a canopy, so something that would come off of, of a building into the setback. A drive-through, which would be allowed as a special use for financial institutions in set sub-districts, so B1C, B1 TOD, B2 retail core, and B2 mixed-use. And also allowed drive-throughs for restaurants in the B1C and B1 TOD sub-districts. And then a drive-through is not permitted for a restaurant in any of the B2 sub-districts. We also have exceptions for historically significant accessory structures, permanent outdoor sales or display. We have permanent outdoor seating areas, permanent outdoor storage, which we also talked about at a previous meeting, the idea was to not permit the outdoors, permanent outdoor storage for commercial districts, so we can amend that piece. Also, exceptions are playground or recreational equipment, except they are not allowed in a corner side yard, solar energy systems, except not allowed in a corner side yard, unless approved as a special use, outdoor swimming pools, not allowed in a corner side yard, and temporary membrane structures or temporary storage tents or canopies, except not allowed in a corner side yard, and then temporary storage containers in accordance with the standards set in 10-7-3-0. So, any questions about the exceptions to encroachments?
Encroachments, no, but I do, I do a question about the B2, the downtown districts. We have a, a bank right now that has a drive-through for its customers. That bank would resell to a restaurant, but still has that drive-through structure existing. We would not allow that restaurant to have a drive-through, is that right?
I, that is a good question. If we can, we can, I can get back to you.
Okay.
Just, I, I think, because we have the, the revisions to the use table, for example, it's a good question, and we should definitely ensure that whatever that use is, either would be permitted or would end up having to do that special use. So, I can maybe have Ann take a look at it. Thank you. Okay. Any others? So we're adjusting section 10-8-2, which is a computation of parking requirements. So current code has a reflection of, specific to letter C, where it mentions places of assembly in which patrons or spectators occupy benches or pews or similar seating. Each 24 inches of that seating would be counted as a seat for purposes of calculating parking. The Planning and Zoning Commission made several changes to section 10-8-9, which I'll review in a minute, and that change removed essentially the way that we calculate bench seating. And so what we're proposing is that the calculations for places of assembly would, would now read as one per 300 square feet of gross floor area, GFA, or one per four persons capacity, whichever is less restrictive. So they have an opportunity to, to choose which method by which they calculate parking requirements, but the Planning and Zoning Commission opted for that language to help choose a more appropriate measurement, and it also is reflective of similar language for schools and, and other, yeah, for, specifically for vocational schools. So there's a, a model for us using that language. 10-8-5 is related to location of off-street parking. So in the B1 district, this applies district-wide, so in each of the sub-districts, this would apply. There are no changes to the first, really the first parts of this, but we add a section that specifically talks about parking in the B1 TOD sub-district. This notes that the following parking location requirements would apply, and it matches the language for both the commercial district and the transitional district, but I'll, I'll read you what those are. So they're all the same. Parking is required, permitted to encroach into the required rear yard, however, all applicable buffer yard requirements shall be met, no parking is permitted in the buffer yard. Number two, parking is permitted to the side of the building, but may not encroach into a required interior side yard, and all applicable buffer yard requirements shall be met, no parking is, is permitted in the buffer yard. And three, parking may be permitted in front of a building in the TOD district by special use only, however, it may not encroach into the required front yard. And we have a figure, that 11B, that refers to this, so it gives us a picture of exactly what we're, what we're looking at. And like I said, each of those sub-districts is the same. 10-8-8 is the B2 district and B1 TOD district parking flexibility. This is recognizing that B2, so downtown area, and a B1 TOD zoning would share characteristics, they're business-heavy, they're potentially parking-heavy, but they're also adjacent to transit facilities, right? We have the train station and various interest in promoting bus activity on Harlem Avenue and, and potential bicycle use in either of those locations. So in that, we've added a, a segment of, you know, language in that paragraph to read, "The B1 TOD district is also a unique area in that it provides for greater accessibility to transit facilities along Harlem Avenue and near the Burlington Street intersection, which influences the quantity of parking needed in a district, encouraging more pedestrian, bicycle, and transit activity." It further goes on to say that, "In addition to on-street parking and limited parking spaces, business and property," that's new, "business and property owners are encouraged to pursue shared and off-site parking arrangements at the rear of properties in the B2 district." We've added "and" B1 TOD district. Where all required parking cannot be provided through these means, business and property owners," so we're talking about both, you know, commercial and residential, mixed-use, "property owners may pay into the village parking fund to contribute to the cost of providing and maintaining public parking." So it opens the door for, you know, the existing B2 district code language that allows these things and adds the B1 TOD to this. It also adds "and" B1 TOD district to being listed in the section A for shared parking. It adds "and" B1 TOD district as the payment in lieu of providing parking. It's, it's allowed both in B2 and B1 TOD. Any questions about those? We're nearly there, I promise. Okay. 10-8-9 for required off-street parking spaces. We have added a section here to the, the existing language that speaks directly to the TOD kind of ideals, right? This is a, when, sorry. When a certain distance from a transit facility, we're reducing parking generally, and this describes where that can occur. So it says, "In certain cases, parking requirements within proximity of a transit facility, typically a half-mile walk to a train station and a quarter-mile walk to a bus stop, may be reduced as a transit-served area is accessed, accessed increasingly more by pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit riders, and less so by motorists. As a result, parking reductions that account for transit-oriented uses within the B2 district, so downtown, and B1 TOD district, as well as the B1C and B1TC to certain extents, are reflected in Table 8." So Table 8 is below here, but, but generally speaking, the closer you are in proximity to either Harlem Avenue or to downtown, you will find. to either Harlem Avenue or to downtown, you will find a lesser requirement for minimum parking. So Table 8 was inserted in full to show the changes of what's proposed. You'll find the set use on the left, the existing parking requirement, and the reasons to the right. So there aren't any changes at the top of this, but it does include footnotes, the same footnote for multifamily dwellings, single-family townhouse, and two-family. And that footnote reads, essentially that, what I just read, the reduced parking requirement of one space per dwelling unit is acceptable for residential uses in transit-oriented areas. It says that same half-mile walk to train or quarter-mile to a bus, including the B-2 districts and B-1TOD district, as well as dwellings above a ground floor of a mixed-use development in the B-1C and B-1TC districts. This parking reduction may also apply to other residential uses in the B-1TC districts along Burlington. Given the district's proximity to bus transit facilities along Harlem Avenue and a metro commuter rail station within walking distance in Berwyn, reduced parking requirements are intended to encourage greater walkability, bikeability, and transit ridership in these districts, which reduce reliance on cars and subsequent need for parking spaces." That's farther down, I'm sorry, a couple of pages, but it gives you the whole flavor of what TOD is about. Independent living is changed from independent elderly housing, we removed elderly terminology. We revised the heading for cultural, government, and recreational. It's now cultural, government, places of assembly, and other. We added a footnote to office and government. It's the only other footnote, which reads as, "Non-residential uses may apply a maximum 20% parking reduction to their parking requirements in transit-oriented areas, including the B-2 districts and B-1TOD district. This is meant to encourage greater walkability, bikeability, transit ridership in the districts, reducing reliance on cars and need for parking spaces." Both of these footnotes are best practices from the steering committee and others. Finishing out the chart, we are, made a change, as noted prior, about places of assembly. We're changing this to either one per 300 square feet of gross floor area, or one per four persons capacity, whichever is less restrictive. There are no other changes until you see office and professional. We removed the unneeded professional modifier, and the added footnote that I had just read about maximum of 20% waiver can be used within this distance to B-2 and B-1TOD districts. The B-1 district chart, again, removes the term elderly from independent elderly housing. We inserted that footnote for non-residential parking for the 20% required parking maximum waiver. For the dwelling types, you'll find that first footnote about walkability in dwelling multiple-family, dwelling above the ground floor, townhouses, and also a change from two minimum parking spaces required per dwelling unit to one per dwelling unit for those multifamily, above-the-ground-floor, and townhouse dwellings. We were, again, we removed the elderly housing from living, added the footnote two to non-residential areas, and then we created new standards for the B-1TOD district. So for residential uses, an assisted living facility gets a minimum of one-half of parking space per dwelling unit. For all other types of residential uses, for multifamily, above-ground-floor, townhouses, and independent living, it's one per dwelling unit. The non-residential uses for parking would be a use of 3,000 square feet or less of gross floor area. There are no parking spaces required. This is similar to the current B-1C requirements. And non-residential uses above 3,000 square feet of gross floor area, one per 400 square feet of gross floor area above the initial 3,000 square feet. This is the same as our existing, and the footnote would allow 20% reduction for areas in that TOD kind of walking distance. And finally, we have the removal of elderly from our independent uses in the B-2 district. And for two bedrooms or less, we've moved it from one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit to one per dwelling unit. Further discussion?
Any questions on the parking? I have one. It's at the very front of the table, page 18, it says residential districts, two per dwelling unit. Does that include residential R2? I mean, R2 would be within a half mile of the train station.
Yeah.
But we seem like we've left those all at two per unit.
Yeah, for single-family properties, those would be two per dwelling unit. Often, it's not in every property, but typically when we're looking at it in residential districts now, typically they have a driveway of some kind that would house at least two vehicles. Not always, but that would be, you know, what we would be looking for. Would you see it differently? Yeah, so there would be few probably exceptions to that.
Continue on.
That concludes the chart.
Huh?
The chart is done.
Yes, the chart is done.
So if there are, are there specific things that are either pertinent to what was discussed this evening, or do you want to hear from Ann about the central business district?
I would. I think the work that you've put together of the other villages around us is pretty, is very interesting, considering it seems like we're going to be more restrictive than all of our neighbors.
Yeah, I didn't necessarily have any prepared talking points for you, but I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you have. In comparing central business districts, and I'm still relatively new to the area, but I still feel like Riverside's a little unique. You know, it's obviously unique in many respects, but the central business district is a little bit different than most others. We've already got large-scale buildings that make sense for the downtown area, whereas a lot of the other downtowns are similar scale. You know, there may be some variation in the building height, but, you know, there are some differences. So it's not quite apples to apples, but, you know, you can see a comparison of what we're proposing and what's out there. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I think the biggest thing that I, I mean, the thing that stood out to me is Riverside would be the only one that would have a minimum height requirement of 24 feet. I'm really surprised that there are no, there are no front setbacks and other type of setbacks in, you know, Clarity Hills, Almond Hurst, Brookfield, Hinsdale, LaGrange, and only in LaGrange Park. River Forest has no front setback in any of their districts. I mean, I just, Western Springs. So it just, it just seems like, are we, you know, are we making it hard with some of these? And honestly, I don't know the answer. I'm just looking at other communities and other communities with vibrant downtowns that are not as restrictive as we are. Is this new restrictions or even the restrictions that we already have in place? Is it thwarting development? Making, you know, if somebody comes into town and looking for something, when they look at this chart, do they say, "I just, you know, I can't, I can't deal with it"?
Sure.
I don't know the answer to that, but I'd love to get other people's feedback on what they thought when they saw that information.
I also feel it's rather restrictive on a lot of things. I mean, I don't know how a lot of these properties that we're looking at can even meet the parking requirements that we have, because there's just no way that we have that type of density. So I understand what the committee was trying to put, but I also don't believe it's real, realistic.
So part of the parking requirements, too, recognizes that there needs to be greater flexibility in the downtown areas where there's a lot of non-conforming properties right now, where they have greater density than the parking allows for. And so the changes are a way to get a little bit closer to the, you know, to the requirements or to being conforming. Certainly, there's a limitation on space in our downtown area. You have to be very creative about using that space, either citing parking underneath a building, which can be really cost prohibitive or expensive, but also manage that space really well in certain instances. Any major redevelopment will likely end up, just based on the size, the allocation of multiple parcels, would probably end up going through a zoning process of some kind and require either a planned unit development analysis and approvals by Planning and Zoning Commission and the board. But those kinds of parking challenges or waivers could be addressed then, certainly. I did get an answer to, or took a look at our proposed changes that address your question about a restaurant downtown with the drive-through. And currently, the code doesn't have any provisions for a restaurant with a drive-through facility in the downtown. And so I cannot recall if during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that was brought up and as to whether it should be in the code. Clearly, there was not an emphasis to add that as an option, but in the Retail Core, restaurants without a drive-through facility is permitted outright, and then they would be considered special uses in places like our public use zones, so like Township Hall and the library and the train station would need a special use to be a restaurant there. And the mixed-use periphery would also be a special use. So just answering that question that you asked.
Thank you.
Okay. I think, come with the questions that we have and we're, I think, are the, we'll get the answers as we move forward. The minimum, the minimum height is something that is concerning to, I think, a majority of the people here.
Okay.
The setbacks, whether, you know, the setbacks be different in maybe the TOD in the Harlem area than in the CBD, to make it more developable. That's kind of what I was proposing when I talked about the train overlay, so possibly that maybe solved that problem as that happens. But I think we're getting somewhere, so thank you. Thank you very much.
And that is whether any of these communities identified here have gone through a TOD process or not.
Yes, in fact, Brookfield has a fairly extensive TOD regulations. In preparing materials for an upcoming meeting, we have an example of the development that's in one of those districts. There are six districts around there, three train stations. They have a slight form-based code for different building types to use, so they're a little bit further along than what we'd be proposing, but I think that information would be of interest to the board.
Yeah, I think it would be. I mean, I'd like to know how they're dealing with increased density and decreased parking.
Yes.
And what that's doing for their neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood and the, you know, shopping experience. I'm just really, I'd love that kind of information.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, we move on. Thank you very much. Appreciate the way you've put this together. And Ann, thank you very much for putting this comparison of these other villages together, because these are the ones we need to be thinking about, so thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we move on to new business, which we do not have any this evening. We'll flip over to trustee reports and communications. Are there any trustee reports or communications this evening?
Surprisingly, not for me, no.
I actually have one. I'd just like to share a little bit of information with the board and the community about the C4 Climate Collaboration Initiative that's been happening. We did have the first meeting of all of our Western suburban communities that are participating last Tuesday, and as President Ballerine indicated earlier, we were on a conference call today with the consultants from that group. We will be setting up, I'm very excited about it, an ad hoc sustainability team that has people participating, you know, who want to be real leaders in the areas of place, prosperity, health and well-being, connectivity, living infrastructure, and resource generation. So I think it'll be a really nice opportunity for myself, Trustee Evans, Commissioner Miller, and then others from our community to, you know, reach out and involve even more people in these efforts as they get underway here. So you'll be looking for information on that if you are curious about it. My contact information is on the Village website. I encourage you to reach out to me with questions so that I can share more.
It was a very good, it was a very good meeting. It was actually surprising that we have done a lot more than, as we spoke, found out that we've staff has driven us in that way of, they couldn't believe how far we've gotten. They really thought we've done some good things, so. And the exciting part is, they have such a network that when we just started talking about EV stations, they had, you know, different vendors already lined up that they know. They had, you know, pay-as-you-go programs, they had different, all different leases and all different things that they know about, and that they will help us wrap our arms around that and move forward. So it was a very, it was a very exciting meeting. So thank you very much for your leadership, and thank you, Ms. Evans, for being on the commission also, and Ms. Miller, and hopefully more people will be identified and we'll get better and bigger. I would just like to mention one thing tonight, and that is our amazing new website. If anybody hasn't gotten a chance to look at it, it's much, much better. It's easier, it's very, very easy to navigate, and I want to thank Ashley, Amy, Ethan, and Jason for all their work on it. It's done very, very well. So thank you. The board has a need for an executive session this evening to discuss appointment, appointment compensation, discipline of performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. The board will not reconvene, and no final action will take place. So I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session.
Motion made.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second?
Second.
Second by trustee Marsh Ozga. Any further discussions? Hearing none. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.